All right, well, we'll go ahead and get the meeting going. We're a few minutes late just because Buildings and Grounds ran a little bit late.
Okay.
Happens. But, roll call. Jeff?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
Keith? And I'm also here. Meeting's been properly noticed and certified. Deb? Meeting's been properly noticed and certified.
Yes.
Excellent. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda? Jeff, seconded by Peter. Any questions, comments on the agenda?
Yeah, can we split three?
Yeah, sure.
Number three, you have to vote the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh... Yep.
Just when I, we start talking about it, I think almost, D and E are almost combined, so there will be some overlap.
Okay, that's fine.
Is there a reason why there's an asterisk before K on K?
That's the... Sorry.
Well, that was added after the agenda was posted. Plus, now we do have an issue with K. Liz had worked up all of the numbers and put it in her H drive and saved it, and she couldn't get it out when our system went down. So, we, she's got it all done, but we don't have it tonight, so we'll have to review that on September 3rd.
So, should, we're not covering K?
No, we can cover K.
Okay.
And I will, we'll send it out ahead of time, so you can have a chance to look it over, but we'll actually have to have the discussion on it at the next meeting.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve by Jeff, seconded by Peter, but we've got eight D and E being combined, and we're striking K. Is that friendly?
Correct.
To you guys?
In separation of three.
In separation of three, yep. Okay, all in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Number three, approval of the July 15th regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Leah.
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions, comments on those? None? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed?
Stand. Stand.
All right. Approval of the August 5th, 2013, regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Peter? Jeff? Any questions, comments on that one? None? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed?
Stand.
All right. And addressing the board, school news.
Um, I have one item I'd like to discuss. Last week, Gary and I met with representatives from ESG and Honeywell, and I think there was some confusion when we talked about their bids, but they talked about performance contracting, and they're in the process of developing a list of items they can probably use performance contracting for, and will bring that to Buildings and Grounds shortly. And there is going to be no charge for that, and I think in the past, I think a couple vendors have come forward and made proposals to do performance contracting, and there was going to be a charge from both of those. So, we are getting that additional service at no extra charge, so they'll be bringing those forward shortly.
You have that in writing?
Um, actually, we, we added one, they didn't have the primary center down when they brought it, because they didn't really think there was anything, they, because of the recent remodeling, they really didn't think there would be anything, but Gary had one thing he wanted them to look at, at the primary center, so he's going to email me that, and we will have it in writing, and it says there's zero charge.
Excellent. Good news.
Mm-hmm.
Any other school news? Yeah, Jared?
I've got two things. First of all, an update on the network. I just talked to Mr. Curless, he said it should be up in about 20 to 30 minutes. They just, they got all their stuff back in their rack, and everything should be rolling. It's a new wireless system, so you're going to want to use the Vikings, and it's a dedicated system, so you have to use your school district login and password to get into that, the same that you would use for your email or whatever else. So, that's just an update from him. Next, we have approximately 23 people signed up for elementary Spanish already, so just a reminder out there that if you're interested in elementary Spanish, see the curriculum webpage, and you'll look for information on it.
Excellent, thank you. Other school news? Do we have any citizens' comments? Yes, Patty?
I do. It's in, it's in reference to eight, excuse me, I'm looking up, eight Z F. So, would it be more appropriate, I wait, I'd be happy to wait, but I just have a couple things in regards to, to that issue. Either way...
Now would probably be more appropriate.
Fine. Um, so, I'm looking at that on the agenda and the additional revenue, and I just have two issues, and I'll be brief, that I hope you will consider with the additional revenues. And I think there's two things to look at. This is coming from me as citizen. I live in Montmoreau, but I pay taxes in Montmoreau, and I'm also a teacher here at the middle school, and have been for 25 years. But I, I'd like to consider looking at the class size in the eighth grade, and then I also, more importantly, from an employee standpoint of the district, I'm a citizen, I really, really, really think the board needs to discuss a plan for creating some long-term goals for employee compensation. This has come up regularly, but it's on the agenda tonight, so I wanted to bring it up. The last time you dealt with compensation since the changes of Act 10, you were very generous as a board and a community to pay the teachers at the highest level, but if you remember how that worked, that, that percentage, that cost of living increase that was allotted by the state, it was decided by everyone involved to just divide that up evenly. Everybody took the hit by Act 10 equally, so the money was distributed evenly, it was a dollar amount. So, if you think about it, it means everybody got the same amount, but in terms of what that means for salaries, it means I got a smaller increase percentage than would somebody else that had been teaching in the district a few years. We were all in agreement that that was the right way to do it at that time, but I'm not sure if that's the right way to do it long-term, because it simply continues to penalize people that are on the higher end of the salary schedule in terms of just my salary value to the district, if that continues to happen that way. It's just a way to think about it that I could even consider. And that coupled with the fact that our healthcare costs, we as employees, we, we're paying those additional healthcare costs, and the higher prescription costs and the co-pays, you know, we're paying that too. So, again, it's a hit, it's a salary hit. And I know this is happening everywhere, and, but I just felt the need to sort of bring this perspective to you, because I'm not talking only as a veteran teacher for 25 years here. I'm really looking, trying to look out for the, the new teachers, the people who have been here a few years, and there's currently no document. There's nothing that says to them, if you teach here 20 years, if you stay and you commit and you believe in this district, and you're a dedicated, quality employee that remains on the staff here, this is what can happen to you, this is what you can plan for. I mean, I know I can plan to take credits, and so can they. You can take a certain number of credits, and then your salary will increase after those credits you accumulate so many, but again, that's an out-of-pocket expense, so that's another, that's another salary, that's a salary hit that, that we're dealing with, and we're dealing with it as amicably as we can, but I, again, I want these, these, just, I want you to hear these words from, so I wrote, "I would encourage you to give some thought to Hollywood, compensate teachers for loyalty, dedication, and service to the Montmoreau District." You can call it incentives, you can call it years of experience, you can call it anything you want, but right now, that, I don't have a picture of that right now. There's no document that I can look at and understand what my future's going to look like. And I say that, so, both from my vantage point, as a veteran teacher, I just fear without, without that information, and the answers are not easy, I, I understand that, but as a veteran teacher, this is what's going to cause people to continue to retire early, you know, and you're going to lose veteran teachers at, you know, the experience, they're, they're retiring earlier than they either want to or should, I think, it's my opinion. And then, young teachers are just going to say, "I can't afford to not know. I can't afford to start having my family, I can't afford to go back and get a master's degree, I can't afford to do any of these, these things," not because of the dollar amount, but because I don't know. I don't know what things will look like long-term for me. So, it's, it's right there on your agenda, but I think really that is the agenda, you know, how to create that, that plan for compensating. I would be remiss if I didn't say, I, I think we are at a loss in our state that we can't sit at a table and negotiate this any longer, and I know we can't, well, we can't do it, but those were days of really professional collaborative conversations between all of the professionals here. And, that's it. Thanks, I appreciate the time, thank you about these issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other citizens' comments? Yes, sir? If you could state your name first.
Sure. Brett Stelston. Just on that topic, I think as they're looking at compensation for the teachers, maybe looking at pay for performance in a way, to see what's the value for the kids versus loyalty or some of those things, and look at what the value is, you know, what they've done for the school and for the kids.
Okay. Thank you. Other citizens' comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Thank you, Keith. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Deb, did you mind running us through the accounts payable summary?
Um, sure. What's, as part of your packet, there were checks dated from August 2nd to August 15th, check numbers 116639 through 116751 totaling $110,998.14. And then, as far as payroll, there was payroll transfer of $176,703.62, federal tax transfer for $64,129.38, and state tax for $13,305.01, for a subtotal payroll of $254,138.1 cent, for a total accounts payable of $365,136.15.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on the check, check report?
I have one.
Yeah, Leah?
On page nine, we have, we have something for sympathy. I'm wondering what you did for sympathy for who and for what.
It was probably, it was my father-in-law passing away.
Okay.
I had a question on page one. I just don't know what a, I believe it's $4,650 for a CIPA filter? C-I-P-A filter?
CIPA filter.
That's our internet.
Oh.
Child Internet Protection Act.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Thank you. And then, the other question was on page two. Can you just bring me up to date? There's a, there's a bunch of charges across from Verizon. Can you remind me of what are, what is the current agreement on who we provide cellphone, who we cover that for?
Our administrators, essentially.
Mm-hmm. I think we have some, a few staff members that travel between buildings on a regular basis, and we do have cell phones for them.
But the vast majority is administrators, and yes, the nurses also have them.
And it's cell phones and iPads?
No, you have a choice between one or the other.
Oh, okay.
So, I, like, I kept my personal cellphone and got an iPad.
Got an iPad.
Actually, I guess iPads are cheaper, the per-month charge, which seems odd, but... Yeah, you have a choice between two.
This must be to purchase an iPad perhaps, because it's a fairly sizable amount.
I'm assuming, I think some, well, mine probably was purchased, we had some being renewed, so some items were done then.
Because the ones that are listed on here look like they're for Stephanie, and they're over $1,000, and I was just curious what the policy is, so thank you.
And Stephanie kind of sets up the purchasing. That's who did mine, so I don't think it's necessarily for her.
Sure.
She's the one that coordinates it for the district.
Sure. So, it comes out as her.
Yeah, so it looks like her.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions on this report? Okay. We've got a motion by Jeff, seconded by Keith, all in favor, aye? Aye opposed? 6A, recommendations in employment, employment status matters. Just the one sheet today?
Actually, there should be two.
Oh, there is two there. Look at that.
Is it yellow?
Oh, did you?
You might only have one in there, there's two in the packet. Because I couldn't...
Yes, originally, there was only one.
Oh, there's two in the packet.
But there's two.
There's usually one day after now.
We had some late ones.
Which is why I asked if it's just one.
Sure. And you'll notice on the bottom of the second one, we have a number of paras, primarily special ed paras, that we're still interviewing for, to fill some of those additional positions that we do have now, and in fact, there's quite a number of interviews tomorrow, and we would like, we really need them to be able to start, which would be before the next board meeting. So, we have there to tentatively hire them, but they know that it's not a formal hiring until the board would approve them, but at least they would be able to start, get ready and start the school year.
I move, Dan, that we approve both sheets. Thank you, Keith.
I second that.
All right, do we have any questions on these? Or any that need to be pulled out?
Just for clarity, were you only approving just those hires? Or not approving, that would be a second motion then for the, to give you the flexibility to hire those?
When I made my motion to approve both sheets, I meant everything on both sheets.
Okay.
If that's two motions.
Is that your understanding? Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, aye? Aye opposed? Consent agenda, we've got the policy committee report and approval for August 5th, as well as superintendent's report. I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor, aye? Aye opposed? All right. New business, we've got policy first reading. Did you want to take this?
Um, yes, and you, I, I did mention it in my report, and the policy committee reviewed it at last meeting. When we went to do our latest borrowing, Quarles and Brady recommended that we actually have a disclosure policy, so that the board's aware of that. These are basically kind of outlining our disclosure requirements as a result of long-term borrowing, and some of those have become stricter, and I think that's part, part of the reason why they're recommending to have a policy now, and basically, we used just the word, they gave us the wording that we needed to include, so that's what's included in your packet. It's kind of an extensive policy.
And Boardman and Clark, you said?
No, this is Quarles and Brady, who are our, our bond counsel.
Okay.
They really are the ones that we use for consulting for that.
Does anybody have any questions on this tonight? It's first reading, and I personally would like more time with it.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Who is the compliance officer? Is that you?
I don't know if it's me or Scott. It's probably one of us, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
Because I don't remember that term being in anyone's job description.
Yeah, I don't recall that either. Jeff, do you remember compliance officer in any of the job descriptions when we did them last year?
Oh, I believe it might be Scott. He referred to it, you know, instead of business management.
If you read number A, it's the, or letter A, it defines, it says clerk, treasurer, business manager, manager, administrator, the compliance officer, so one of those people.
And Scott has basically been fulfilling this in the past.
Scott's been doing this. Would it be appropriate to specify that in, in this policy, that the compliance officer, comma, business manager, parentheses, business manager? Just so there's no...
I would think so, yeah.
Just so there's no confusion, and that's, that's a minor, that's really not, that's really not anything to do with the guts of the...
That would be the only problem with that.
It's one really minor thing, but it has nothing really to do with the policy, but because it's so many pages, it says at the bottom, like, one of one, two of two, it should say, like, one of seven, two of seven. Just because it's so many pages, I would hate for it to get all messy.
You're right. Yeah, because I didn't get page eight of eight.
I only got seven pages, so, yeah, that would be my...
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments on this one?
Seeing none?
And Keith, yours was on page three, where it says, just at the top, the compliance officer. You mean to define it there.
Well, we said, well, the compliance officer, I didn't know if that was you or if that was Scott.
Okay. Okay.
It's listed a bunch on page two of two also.
Yeah.
What policy number would this be? Where would this live? What section?
Finance section.
Three, two...
Oh, I thought we had a number on it.
I thought we just, I'm not quite sure. We've got it somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have one on that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? 8B, approval of the snowfall contract, so Deb, would you mind giving us kind of the overview of why we're looking at this?
Sure, and I did send an email out on that. You know, we had some questions come up about the equipment, and we pretty much, we consulted with our school attorney and our insurance representative, and they recommended that we be added as an insured on dependable's insurance, which they added us immediately. We got a certi, a certificate from their insurance company right away. And, kind of in the process, I, I realized that we, the board, it had been recommended, but the board had never formally acted on dependable's bid. So, that's, we need to look at doing that, and also, one other additional thing, Boardman and Clark is going to do an addendum to basically their bid, which is what we use as our contract, requiring that their, while their equipment's on our property, that their insurance covers that equipment during that time, and sign off on that.
While dependable on care's equipment is on our property, their insurance is covered.
Yes, is on our, on school district property, theirs is covering, yeah.
Okay.
That's what they're recommending.
Well, whereas if we have a person who's climbing on the equipment, falls and gets hurt.
And that's where the liability, but that's where they're covered, and then they've added us as insured to have more coverage.
Excellent.
Against, for us, yeah.
Okay, so...
Does that include their storage of their equipment on our property?
The, yeah.
Or just when it's being transcribed and used?
No, when the equipment is on district property at any time, that is their insurance company that would cover any damage to it.
Can I say something?
Please.
I had one, local vendor actually contacted me today about what the process was for this, and I guess, personally, with my hesitation of them using our facilities as a storage facility, I'd almost rebid it out, but we're geared to the, what was considered a verbal contract at the time, so I still have great hesitation with them allowing us, we allowing them to store their facility or their stuff on our property. So, that's, that hasn't changed from before.
Any other questions on this? So...
I, I might, I don't always remember everything that was said at board meetings. I really thought that there was a time, Gary's back here. See if my memory matches anything that sounds familiar, Gary. I thought you came to BGIT meeting once, and said you'd sent out three bids, and only one had been returned, and only one, one had been returned, and that you were going to send them back out again, and then, I thought you recommended dependable, and we approved it.
I thought so also. The, the bids, I had three bids, and we ended up going with dependable. One of the companies actually ran out of bids, which was not down, but, and it's my recollection too, that it was approved, and, and surely at BGIT, and, and then I thought that it got approved at the main board meeting, and then, what happens is, we didn't get that contract signed. I don't know how that happened, or what, I know we got busy, next thing you know, it's snowing, so, one year out of three-year contract that we've been through so far.
I remember that part, we were, we had like two years left on the existing contract, but I don't remember if that was full board or if that was BGIT meeting that we had that conversation.
I assume it was full board, I don't think I attended the meeting after that.
We discussed that thoroughly at the BGIT committee meeting.
You did.
Brett, I don't remember when.
It was like May, we found those minutes. It was like May of that year, but we couldn't find anything after that, so...
After that, I don't know who made the motion or who seconded it, but it was, you know, Gary did mention the three bids, and it came back, and he recommended the dependable's bid, because everybody sent a bid in, and they were extremely hired, because it wasn't by a certain way that we used to do it by. Would that be right, Gary?
Well, one of them was actually kind of lower, but we did not, we really had a lot of faith in that particular people, as it turned out.
And that's why we sent them back to you and told you to rebid it?
I think that they were asking for a yearly bid at that time. We had a regular, as, as happened, but then they said, "Well, over the year, if we just have one, one certain amount for a whole year, no matter how much snow came into it."
So, regardless of what happened historically, it has no bearing on where we're at. So, we need a contract, and you're asking us just to approve this as dated March 27th, 2012, so it'd be a two-year contract at this point?
Well, I think...
Because it's written free, but it's dated in 2012.
Yeah, two more, yeah.
So, I have been absolutely delighted with the job that these guys have done for the district, and the fact that they keep their equipment here, in my opinion, is fantastic. And the reason for that is we're the first ones they work on, and in those big snowstorms, they aren't getting a semi over here with an unloader on it. So, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve this. Seconded by Jeff. Any further questions or comments on this? Questions, comments? Everybody's seen it? And this is my motion with that addendum for their insurance. Okay, no questions or comments? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have 8C, online physical education plan.
Okay, and you do have this in, I, I mentioned it, apparently, in February, a parent came forward and had wanted to get approval for taking a half a credit of online FIA, and putting that towards graduation, it was approved, but it was also, we were kind of in the process of having our own staff here develop a half a credit of a FIA course online. And so, we're still in that process right now, but we have had a parent ask about it again, and we have not changed our graduation policy, and right now, we're pretty open as far as what we allow as, as incoming credits from online courses, so we don't feel we're in a position really to prevent a student from taking additional ones. We are looking at, I think ours will be done in January, so we will have that to offer students, which, you know, will be a, a good option, but at this point, until we really revamp our graduation policy and look at changing what we would allow or not allow, it's pretty open-ended. So, we just wanted to clarify this, because we have had a parent inquire about it, and Jared probably, he's had more contact as far as with his parent and as far as the background to this. I guess if you, anyone has any other questions about it, but...
So, you're looking for no action on this?
We're basically looking to allow students to continue to do this, which we kind of tried, I think, in the motion. It almost appeared that we were going to allow only the half a credit, but right now, our graduation policy doesn't have that restriction in it, so it doesn't match really with what the motion said, so we, I, I guess I'm looking for a motion to allow it at this point until the graduation requirements are reviewed.
Isn't that, I guess, Keith, well, maybe I was going to say it, but...
Well, it was actually Keith's.
Isn't that we, well, I thought we agreed to last year when we went through all this?
What, what we agreed to was we were going to keep the graduation requirement at one and a half credits of physical education, and that one of those three semesters could be taken online, whether it was Brigham Young, Middleton Cross Plains, or one that our own, Todd and Martha were going to develop with Stephanie Spoor, and then Stephanie Spoor would be the approving authority if someone were to opt out of attending the gymnasium for one semester and taking an online course through our own school district, and then Todd and Martha would be the ones... Todd and Martha would be the ones enforcing any standards on the performance and awarding the grade. So it'd be in-house control of keeping the standards up. But the one and a half credits was to remain.
Right. And that's the way I heard it.
Because see what Act 105 allows, Act 105 actually allows a senior to graduate with 1.0 instead of 1.5.
Understood. But what I think I heard was that you are looking for the policy to match the graduation policy.
Right now.
Which keeps it at 1.5?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And right now, we're allowing students to take other online courses and transfer those in for other graduation requirements. And we haven't really changed our graduation requirement policy to reflect, oh, you can only do this many in this or this many. We haven't done that. It's been pretty open-ended and allowed as long as it was a comparable course. So that's kind of where we're at. We don't think we're, until we really review our graduation requirements policy, that we can not allow a student from doing this at this point, just because we haven't done that in the past with any other course.
Okay. Okay. So we need a motion then? Or I guess maybe without objection, we'll have Deb update the graduation policy and bring it back to us?
Well, we aren't to the, I mean, that's going to take a while. And only, we're going to have to do that probably at a graduated scale, meaning like incoming freshmen next year will be under that new graduation policy. So current students, which the one in particular that has inquired about this is already a high school student. So we really can't change their graduation, you know, they're already in the middle of their high school career. So we really can't change their graduation requirement policy on them. Usually you kind of transition it in. So right now, we, our feeling is we have to allow this since we're allowing it in other areas. Like they can take a history online course and that will count, transfer in. So that's kind of our feeling. Until we change the policy, which is going to take some time, and then probably it will apply to freshmen coming in next year. So when they do their schedule in the spring, they will know this is what, these are the guidelines I have to follow to graduate from Mount Hore. So we're not at that point yet. So we are feeling, after discussion about this, and we talked with Jared and I talked with Stephanie about it. Jared, do you want to add something?
Well, yeah, I just, the main crux of the problem here is in the motion that was made, it states that it's going to be, that students can take a one-time online credit, half-credit of class. And then the other two half-credits have to be done traditionally. We have a student in the district who's done that and is looking to do another online half-credit. And I'm stuck between our graduation policy, which doesn't sort that out, and the motion that was made at the board level. So I don't have policy in the back saying, no, you can only take one half-credit online, even though that's the motion that was made and approved. But I don't have a policy to go back to that parent and say, we won't accept them doing that here as an open enrollment to another district or through BYU or even our course when we get it up and running second semester. So then the discussion has to be that we, we need to change the graduation policy to reflect the motion that was made in February that says that the student can only take one half-credit of online PE, the other two would be in a traditional setting, in a traditional classroom.
Okay. I think we got it. Yeah, thanks.
Do we like verify what, where online they're going to do this? And it's not like gymclass.com or something? It's like a real?
Very few accepted vendors and we vetted them.
And do we have a policy on that? Or that's just kind of out there hovering right now?
No. We have operating procedures and that's why we wanted to clarify it when Act 105 came through. I think we're really happy with what the board decided, but trying to get that into policy and move it forward, you know, that's going to take us a little bit of time to have the class created, get the policy aligned, and then have a start date with probably next year's freshmen. So that we can inform incoming eighth graders of what, you know, their career might look like through high school.
Okay. Mary?
I have two questions. One is you keep saying a motion was made, a motion was made, but that was not a policy, correct?
Correct.
That was not a policy. So you have to go based on what the policy is, is my understanding.
That's what we want to clarify.
Yes. So it seems like that's what you're kind of defaulting. And the other question that I have is, I'm not, I am confused a little bit on how you have to wait when someone comes in and they have to have the same policy as an eighth grader, because I know Madison changed their policy after Act 105. And it wasn't, it was universal, it started. And the reason that that was done was because we needed to get some of our students intensive intervention. And so they needed to get into intervention blocks as soon as possible. And we used that time in order to allow them to graduate, quite honestly, some of our athletes. So I'm not sure about that. I guess I'd like some further clarification just to make sure. And then I would like us to consider looking at that, at the graduation policy and having it be aligned. To me, it doesn't, it seems like we have to go by what our policy is. So it, we wouldn't go based on a motion, we'd go on our policy. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The problem, I think, that the policy doesn't say. So we're kind of stuck with what the motion was made and we're kind of in this weird gray area.
Well, and sorry to piggyback on what Mary said. As far as implementing a policy, I mean, we had our graduation policy where we flipped or brought in the cum laude system. And that was, right now, that kind of hurt. You know, that, you know, it gets flipped right now. And it didn't matter if you were a junior. I mean, it happened right now. So I guess I'd like to talk about that, that phased-in approach, because that may be beneficial.
Yeah.
But we need to talk about it, because that has not been done historically here.
The only thing is if we were to say, okay, our graduation policy right now is pretty open-ended. So technically, a student could take three half-credit online FIAID classes and meet our one and a half credit. And maybe they do that, they get to be a junior, and we change the policy and say, no, you can only, a half a credit is allowed. Okay, so this student thinks they fulfilled their physical education requirement at that point. And then we tell them, oh, no, you need a whole, you need two FIAID classes your last year. That's kind of what I'm saying. There are certain things you can implement immediately. But if it's going to affect whether that student can, you know, they plan their whole track and they're on track to graduate, and all of a sudden we change that requirement when they're a junior, you have, some things you have to look at that way. And because you can't tell a student that's going to be a senior that now you need a whole year of FIAID.
Understood.
So that, I mean, there are certain things you can implement immediately, but there are certain requirements or restrictions that you would have to kind of do grad, on a graduated basis. Maybe freshmen have this, sophomores have this, and juniors and seniors are still operating under the old policy or.
Okay.
And Stephanie actually wants the education committee to start reviewing that.
Peter?
I must confess, I'm actually somewhat confused. I would have thought we would have developed this policy right after the motion was made. I think we were pretty adamant that we would only allow a half a credit to be waived. And actually, Todd testified here before us saying he was going to develop the class as an online version. And it was going to be his class was the only online option that would be available. That was the words coming from him. And that we could potentially use this as a revenue source for other districts to offer to them. So I'm kind of confused why this wasn't already dealt with. And now we're being asked to give a waiver to a single student. Would this send them over the 1.5 credits or is this?
No, it would be still towards their 1.5 credits they need. And it's really hard to restrict under part-time, what still is kind of part-time open enrollment. You cannot really restrict without it being written in your policy, graduation policy.
I'm not arguing with that. I just think we're kind of, we're way behind the A-ball. And I would have assumed we had already started implementing that right from the get-go. Because one of the big discussions we had was not being able to substitute a co-curricular for it. And that was the, the online option to meet the needs of the parents at that time.
And our teacher is working on the online option. It will be, should be ready by January. That's their plan. But we can't really require students under part-time open enrollment. If we have in our graduation policy, they can take 1.5 credit online or through a virtual type FIAID. You can't require them to only use ours. But you can say only one of those will be allowed. But you still are kind of, you know, I, we'd encourage our students to use ours. And for the most part, it'd probably be more convenient. They have the teacher right there if there are issues or that.
Might I add that we can't change the policy until the course goes through the course approval process. That happens every October through the education.
But you can look at the policy. I mean, we can look at the graduation policy in general, because it sounds like there was conversation. Did you think the policy was looked at?
Oh, yeah.
And you assumed that that was part of the policy? So there was a policy?
I'm wondering why this was even on here. I already assumed it was something that was taken care of at the administrative level.
I agree with Peter. That's the way I remember it as well.
That's what the vote, the motion and stuff sent it back to Wayne to be dealt with at the administrative level for his proof. I don't know why it's even back here. That's where I'm at.
Well, so it sounds like you guys can figure out what you need to do to get this moving forward. So we.
And we are planning, I mean, we've talked to Stephanie. We, I have a plan to get that moving forward, so.
Okay. Excellent. Keith, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just remembered that it was a board decision that would result in two, a minimum of two separate semesters of the traditional physical education offerings. And also administrative J, just on a side note, administrative J, administrative rule J from Department of Public Instruction states that these have to be taken in three different years. You cannot take more than one half-credit in any given year of your high school. So you can't take, you can't take two semesters freshman year, one semester sophomore and be done. It has to be done in over three separate years.
And there was a lot of discussion to make sure that the superintendent and the principal of the high school were the gatekeepers to that. So just not anybody could be taking those classes.
Okay. We've got eight D and E, and I will turn it over to Peter for these.
Well, I, there's a document in front of you. One of the things, and I concede the point right up from, from the beginning, that you're not going to reach everybody all the time. And then that's probably about 5% of our populace. And then there's probably 5% that know more what's going on at the board level than we do. But the middle 90% is where we can make our biggest impact with communication. And I think the other things we need to kind of concede right from the beginning is really realizing, like a lot of things, we have to actually admit that we have a problem before we can move forward. And then understanding, one of the big things that came to light after the shootings was what is our security plan? And this communication, command, control, and communication is any, are the cornerstones to any combat operations. And we don't have a lot of that stuff in place. And if you need, I think the outage with the leakage of the IT center was perfect argument for the communication document we have tonight. Since 11:02 this morning, we've had no mass communication capabilities with anybody in our district. We've had none of that. The tornadoes in Oklahoma proved beyond a shadow of doubt, the way they were able to use mass communication, both texting and School Connect to push out emails, not even on their site or their servers for their kids, ultimately saved a lot of lives. So we really only have in our district, a single route of mass communication that we use on a routine basis, and that's the email blasts. We have at our disposal, a lot of other things that we just don't use. Prime example is the only time you get a robocall from our district is when you owe money. So when you owe money for your lunch account, that's the only time the robocalls work. So now whether you agree with politics or not, robocalls work. Robocalls are the way to make from mass communications. They give the superintendent power and authority to be able to make some instant decisions and get information out, especially in emergency situations. Very, very important to do that. We also need to acknowledge the fact that we sitting at this table here do not communicate the way a bulk of people do communicate these days. Social media, online and electronic media is the way people communicate. We have to kind of leave behind the old niche or the old argument that we've always kind of done it this way. We have to leave those thoughts behind as we move forward. So when I kind of put this together, and Dan challenged me very openly and very honestly to come up with some list of ideas on ways to enhance communication. So I hope I did that to meet your goal, Dan, before coming back to the board here. And I'll go through them just in brief here. And I'll actually make the decision that Mary prompted me to think about when I get to the end of that. So if you bear with me for a few minutes. But some of the big questions I need to ask myself was, you know, part of the communication is listening. And how well do we do that as a district? I think we do okay at that. I don't think we do as well as we could, but we could improve that as well. How do we communicate as part of our strategic plan and our emergency communications? If our net goes down like it did today, we have no way to reach our mass students at one single populace. We have no ability to reach those sorts of things. We need to start embracing and realizing what are the emergency situations that arouse. Do we need to be more transparent? You know, at the board level, by law, we're required to do that. But what about our day-to-day operations? And regardless of what we think or not, we are a service industry. We are here as a service industry and we need to start developing a positive message. And that, a lot of these social medias will allow us to do. So I'll just read some of the suggestions I come through. I would love to see Ms. Klein have a blog on some of the updates that are going on. I'd also like to see a curriculum type of blog. Transportation, I think, is critical. I think the bus fee and all sorts of things echo some of that. And then a building blog. I think the district updates that we get from Ms. Klein are very important as board members. But I would think the public would be something that would be nice to see, as well as staff members. The teachers newsletters, I think we can also take some time to really enhance those and have a sections in those that would be all school news type of thing. And I like to see, with the exception of the high school, our newsletters from our buildings, which are supposed, that's one thing we advertise, don't come out on a regular basis. The high school is the only program that does that. I recommend here too, and I've talked about it for a few years now, but a board table at registration, a board serving or the admin team serving once again at the teachers welcome back. All parts and parts of communications. GR codes at all the classrooms in the village. I think this would really enhance our communication skills. And the high school is the only program that does that. So I'd like to see that as well. We have the Mount Hore mails. It's phenomenal, Gary. But I would like to see us develop with some of our English classes and our students writing for the mail or getting some more information or collaboration with the mail to get that sort of stuff out. Videotaping as both is a podcast, both not only for this sort of venue, but a lot of our parents, parents instructions. We talked about that at the technology committee for quite a while. Prime example we used was everyday math. How can we get a fourth or fifth grade parent to learn that? And podcasts was talked about for a long time, but was never followed through on. Employee of the month programs, the suggestion box that was introduced last year that was never followed up on. Kind of, I know people are suggesting ideas, but are they following up electronically? Do we track those sorts of things? And then the big programs, I would suggest more ad hoc committees. Actually, Ms. Seidel's recommended that last time. This is actually, I would recommend this to go to, to start developing some of those sorts of things. The texting program, Ms. Klein was kind enough to put some costs in there. I can get my laundry prescription refilled with the text message. But yet, we don't have that capability in our district. So all of our stuff, that's the way parents communicate nowadays. Snow days, snow emergencies, all those sorts of things. Robocalls, enhancing our system that we currently have in place for emergencies, emergency operations. School Connect, there's the webpage for you. Same kind of principle of pushing emails out on a non-local, a non-server that's not on your property. So if there is a damage or there is problems, they can still get emails and email information out to the public for those sorts of emergencies. Twitter and Facebook, whether you like those two things or not, that's the way kids communicate. That's the way a lot of parents communicate. So Facebook is a lot safer than it used to be. And actually, the new Google app for Facebook, the Google version of Facebook is far safer than Facebook ever was. So there's some information out there as well as Flickr, YouTube videos, using all that microtechnology to promote our district, to develop that positive image. I'll make the argument once again for a teacher on the board and our student representative on the board. And then also, I made the argument a few times, which I want us to think about as representatives on our local boards. We have one that goes to the village, but not to the other seven municipalities that sit on our district. We need to start having more communication with them as well. So you challenged me. I hope I came up with a good list, Mike.
It's a good list, absolutely.
So I actually recommend, so we don't beat it into the ground tonight, is developing an ad hoc committee and sending it there along with a representative from our administrative team and kind of starting to get some of these ideas going. This is definitely an evolution project. And it mirrors well with both curriculum and it mirrors with our strategic plan and communication and our security.
Does anybody have any comments? Questions? No. So it's a tremendous list. There is a number of different avenues of communication as well as things that I think are perhaps types of, you know, how can we be more transparent? Is that communication or is that a strategic vision? Do we listen? Is that how we communicate? Or again, is that part of something? Is that how we communicate or again, is that part of something how we position ourselves strategically as a district? There are certain things for communication that absolutely, I think, if you were to prioritize or identify a list that's maybe more bite-sized than what we have right here, because honestly, looking through this list to do all this could be a couple of years of work. And there's also, you know, you start to bring in social media. Absolutely, people are using social media. However, there are security concerns with those, and I believe that our CIPA filter actually blocks those currently. Does anybody know that? I believe that, and I believe CIPA blocks social media currently. Now, we can override that, but there's risks that go along with that. So as I had said before, if we have opportunity to expand or improve on how we communicate, I'm all ears. So you would like to create an ad hoc committee, and I would support that, but it would not be to implement, but it would be to discuss these different types of communication and identify how they would have a role or serve a role within the district, and to make sure that there aren't risks associated with that type of communication, as well as identify based upon that communication, if it's something that is going to be a benefit, or is it something that's just adding more cycles to either an administrator's position or things of that nature? I don't know if I'm making myself clear. Yeah, Mary?
A couple of comments. One is that I think, Peter, you, your first point about listening, I think, is really critical. And I think before we make this a priority, the committee, get people involved in it, I guess I would like to know what other people feel. And so perhaps a survey of some form, like we've done in the past, to kind of ask people, are they wanting communication? What type of communication are they wanting? And how would they best receive that? You estimated 5% and 90% in the middle, and I guess my question is, what is the population you're thinking? Everybody who lives in our school district, those within our school district, teachers and staff, students, there's a large amount of audience. So when I looked at the recommendation, and they are exhaustive, I kind of think there's emergency communication, and to me, that goes underneath the safety plan that we are working on, that falls under that whole district safety net, whether it's bullying or whatever, when there are concerns. If there's a lockdown at the school, how would we find that out? And so that's one issue, and that, to me, falls under that umbrella. But then there's also, like, district news, and there are newsletters. I've gotten newsletters from the IC, there's the parent, there's the site council, there's, personally, the blog was not something I used, but I knew Dr. Anderson had it, and I would go on it if I needed to. So I guess what I'm saying is suggesting, before we do an ad hoc committee, I would suggest that we do some listening and we find out how many people have this issue, and a representative sample from our staff, a representative sample of our students, a representative sample of our parent community, then also a representative sample of our community at large, that are our taxpayers, that are paying, whether they have kids in the district or not, to really inform moving forward. Because I think they're all good ideas, but I'm one person, and I would hate for us to take a large chunk of our administrators' time, a large chunk of our superintendent's time, to go forth on something that our public really doesn't want us to do. So I would advocate that we start with listening. So my thought on it.
And I don't oppose that. I think that's a fair assumption. But I do want us to be critical of giving Deb some of these off these lists, some alternatives to emergency communication too, since we saw what had happened to Transpar today, but I don't disagree with what Ms. Seidel said. Or you?
Other comments?
Just, just one. Everything in here is well-intentioned, Peter. Don't get me wrong in that. But also, you know, I've been to a couple of legal workshops put on by WASB that remind us that in between meetings, we have no official capacity. Now, if we're going to have a listening session, we simply post it as a meeting, and we get four of the seven, or all seven, to show up, and it goes on as a special meeting. But individually, we have no official capacity in between meetings. And we sound the gavel tonight during the meeting, our official capacity ends until you reconvene us. And so there's some, we have some legal restrictions on what we can do. Our administrators, on the other hand, do not have those same restrictions. So I think, I think the source of the communication should, should be our administrator. Period. And then how that, you know, Christmas tree's out from there, largely up to our superintendent.
Okay. Well, yeah, any comments?
I, I, we do kind of have a communication issue because, for example, the most of the people who talk to me about the bus issue, they don't get them on Word of Mail. They have no idea. On a smaller note, like even for me to find our class list this year, our website is so kind of, everything's kind of everywhere to me, that some of these things, I think, as far as like Facebook, Twitter, all of that, if you, websites now where whatever you put on there will automatically bounce. So there's not necessarily more work, but it might be something to look into, because we have a lot of information out there that's not very easily accessible already. So it might just be a matter of reorganizing a little bit to get information out there. Like we, the bus thing, it was actually in Dr. Anderson's blog, but you have to, you had to know that he had a blog, and you had to know to click on it. And a lot of times you'd get an email that says, he's updated his blog, but you click the link and it didn't necessarily go where you thought it was going to go. So there might be some smaller things that we can look at now to do without a big.
Sure. Jeff?
Well, I'm, I think a little more getting out there, the information wouldn't hurt anything. Ad hoc committee, okay. And like Keith said, you know, when we leave here, we're done. If we can go to any other meeting, fine, but we're in a single capacity. You know, it's doing the survey, okay, but some of the times, the survey doesn't really give us the full result. And we could do it, but, you know, it's a source of information back to us. I'm okay with it all. I think the sooner the better, and whatever happens, try and get more information out there. Can't hurt anybody.
So it sounds like we've got at least two different opinions around the table about how we approach this. So we can certainly, if someone would care to make a motion. My concern is if we charge forward with a list and say we're going to knock these down one at a time, not only would we have potentially some crossing of communications, but we're also, somebody has to do the work to get the communications put together and out. And I also have concerns about security. So I agree with what Mary had said. I would prefer to find out if we have a problem before we try to fix the problem. And, you know, we talked about adding a transportation blog. Well, Dr. Anderson had the blog with the bus rates on there. So there's some of this that, and it goes back to what I had said last time, is I'm of the mind, we have to be very careful or considerate of the types of communication we put together. And maybe a lot of our communication has to focus around letting people know what type of communication we have and what is available. So maybe it's not adding more types of communication, but just communicating what's already there. And I'm not convinced that, you know, throwing more things at it is going to make anything better. Now, that being said, it's like the emergency texting. I think that's, that's a great idea. We've got some pricing around it. It's costly. But, you know, at the same time, it's only costly until we need it, and then it was worth every penny. So with that, and I apologize for how many times I say um. I watched a board meeting this last week. If I pay a nickel for every time I say um, I don't think we'd have any budget problems here. So that being said, does anybody care to make a motion on this?
I would make a motion that we ask Ms. Klein to follow on those items that impact emergency notification, and that, and including school getting out early for any reason or any sake. So if we pull those things off. And then I wonder about, this is a separate issue, not a motion. Can I raise a separate issue?
Okay, so this is a motion?
You want me to finish that one? You want me to say? I make a motion that Ms. Klein.
Yeah, can you restate your motion, please?
I make a motion that Ms. Klein pull off those items that have to do with emergency contact notification, including those items that would end school at a different time. I think I just said it three times. But that would require school to end at a different time.
It's 20 cents, because there is another one. So I will second that. Did you get that?
I think.
Any questions on that motion? Okay. So motion by Mary, seconded by me, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay. Now, my comment is, I wondered if we could check with, I don't think I see any of the principals here, but I wondered if we could follow up with either Stephanie or Jeff to see if there would be a marketing class or some, some sort of business class, maybe the DECA, you know, Kids in DECA, to look at those items that have to do with district PR. Because there were a couple of items in here about, I think, taking a virtual tour of the school, and what does Mount Herd School offer, and a lot of that kind of promotional type things. I would wonder if we could get some student involvement with that and have them look at some of these items. Perhaps they'd also be interested in doing part of the survey to find out what is our current district PR. And then come up with a marketing campaign, maybe campaign is a strong word, but a marketing kind of strategy. And it would be a way to get students involved and have their voice heard. So I would wonder about that. But they're not here for me to ask them if that would be a fair task.
Okay. So for future agenda items, maybe we can have this come up again? Because we should have our principals back, not at our next meeting. Yeah, at our next meeting.
I mean, we could also see if Deb is comfortable asking that of Stephanie and Jeff and just seeing what the administrative team feels like, but.
Well, we'd still want it on the agenda, so we can talk about it, right? So, okay. All right. Any other comments on that one? So Peter, thank you for putting the list together, and it's, it's a tremendous list. I mean, it's a little daunting. So let's figure out which one of these we, you know, let's find the low-hanging fruit first and start knocking. So, yep. So thank you for that. We are on 8F, discussion on additional revenue priorities.
Okay. The finance committee had pretty much directed me to take those, kind of generate a priority list from admin council. So at our last admin council meeting, we discussed that, and I did summarize what their recommendation was. Their number one top priority was raises for all employees. The second item to look at was class size, and the third was professional development. But by far, the top one was look at providing raises for all.
What was the third?
Professional development.
Another five cents. Anybody have any questions on this? Keith?
Was there any discussion about hiring an additional social worker or an additional school nurse? I understand class size is, is that same, same thing, I mean, increasing. Or for that matter, if we're going to add one more professional staff next year, who would it be, in what area? Any discussion on that?
When it came to the class size issue, which was, like I said, the second item, really what they looked at was the grades that have higher numbers per section, which kindergarten, second, and eighth were the three that were specifically mentioned for the upcoming year. But it did, we, there was really no discussion of other areas. It was primarily looking at the actual sections of classes.
How many are in the community?
Well, it's changing every day. I think it was like, I'm going to say maybe 21, somewhere in that.
Peter?
Point of information, before we actually discuss much, can you give me the actual projected amount of access?
We are looking at approximately $300,000. And like I said, it's until we know our third Friday count, which really is where our revenue limit comes from, it's hard to know exactly, but it will be around that.
Okay. Can I, can I jump on Peter for just a minute?
Sure.
I don't like when we use the word excess. I don't like when you use the word excess, because we really don't have excess until our bus fleet is sustainable, our buildings are maintained, money's in the bank for paying utilities and things like that. We may have additional funds that are not currently earmarked, but we also have deferred expenses. And every, every one of our departments has some deferred expense in there. And I just hesitate to use the word excess, because if, you know, if our neighbors read that we've got excess money in the school district, that could be interpreted in so many different ways, and most of them would be wrong. Right? You know, I just think that, you know, we have, is, in fact, I'd be nitpicky, we have $300,000 more than what was projected when the budget was prepared. Is that correct?
And that was because the state budget hadn't been passed, so we were using what basically was kind of the governor's proposal at that time.
But as I look at things, there's a big difference between, between that and saying that we have $300,000 excess dollars in the district.
Sure. Other questions on this?
What's the projected enrollment for second and eighth again? What are the class sizes?
Eighth was like 27 or 28, I think. And second, I think, was around 24, but it's hard to say, because that's really kind of, and Tammy probably can, we don't, that's not necessarily counting every student who's withdrawn. If we haven't received a request for records, those kids are still in the count. So it's not a definite number at all, right, at this point.
But 28 in eighth grade is a lot. That seems to be higher than I recall. And I was one of the, when you said the three recommendations, that was based on finance, is that right? That conversation, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
So I was one of the voices at that table, and I guess I would say that I would argue for class size as switching to one of the top priorities, and I know Keith wasn't at that meeting as well. So I think we do need to have a conversation about class size. If it's 28 at eighth grade, I have concerns about that. I just have safety concerns about that, many eighth graders in one room. So.
Other questions?
I have a question. Did it come at all about possibly saving some money so that you don't have to cut all the paraprofessional hours to put aside for health insurance for them?
It, that really wasn't one of the items that.
And it didn't, because I believe the concern is the long-term implication of health insurance. Remember, next year is not going to be the budget, it's just the monitor period. And so the concern is not necessarily for next year, it's for the following year, which this $300,000 would not directly impact.
We've got, so can we, on our next agenda, can we put a executive session for salary and fringe benefit conversation?
Yeah.
Well, I know we can. I'm just kind of, can we have a note of that, please? And I believe we've got, we've got a number of areas that need attention, and I appreciate this list that every- and I appreciate this list that everybody put together. Each one of them warrants conversation. So, since this is the first blush, if you will, of what the top three are from the committee, let's have this on our next agenda as well, in open session. We'll, of course, have to have the raises be a separate conversation in executive session, but number two and three, class size and professional development, we can absolutely discuss openly.
Can I ask that also at executive session, we have a discussion about professional development and what the current procedures are for professional development? I certainly saw some expenses on the current financial report for some professional. But how are those decisions made? Maybe perhaps getting a little bit of what Patty Schleicher was saying earlier about compensation for teachers that have been in the district a while. Are they granted professional development opportunities to kind of keep their toolbox full and sharp? And at a different pace than perhaps some of our newer teachers who are coming out and know RTI and Common Core state standards? And, you know, I just think education is changing so drastically right now that perhaps one of the ways that we can consider compensating those teachers that have been in the district for even longer than five years, I mean, I hate to say that there's been that much drastic change, but there has been in five years, that is there a way that we can talk about how to keep professional development perhaps a priority for those teachers? And so I would just add, adding PD to salary and fringe, if that's okay, if agreeable. And then in terms of the class size issue, is September 3 adequate time if we decided to do something in that compensation? Or would you have to totally, if you added a section, it would-
I think even if we approved it tonight, it would be short, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, that would, it would be short, but-
It would be short, yeah. And Jeff was dreading that as a possibility?
So he's got it obviously already figured out with his existing staff?
Okay.
We have a sheet that shows each grade level with class, anticipated class sizes.
I'm curious if it changed after registration.
Right.
We could get an updated one and I'll, we'll send out an updated one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it does seem higher than, I don't remember 28. I'm thinking 26, but I might be getting our recommendation-
I think it was 28.
-with our actual-
Anyone remembers? Please.
Well, as we, as we think about this for our next meeting-
This coming year for eighth grade.
We have-
28. Yeah.
It's 28.
Dan, let me be clear. Jeff didn't say, no, it can't be done. He said that it would be very difficult, but if told they had to do it, they would do it. For that, for this.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, can I just clarify that?
So he's saying it's difficult for him.
No, it's difficult, just in terms of the master schedule, to revise the entire master schedule to have another section and to do the same for all of the kids within those grade levels in addition to all the special ed teachers having to redo the schedules for the kids with disabilities.
I get that. My question is, as an educator, take his own personal amount of time and the pain in the butt that that's going to be to do for scheduling purposes. But as an educator, does he feel like he would support the fact that lower class sizes, we know have a direct correlation on heterotest?
I don't want to speak for him specifically on that, but answer.
Okay.
And Jeff is in support of lower class sizes. It's just, you know, the different, you know, at this point.
Yeah, I get that.
But he is definitely in support of lower class sizes.
Thank you, sorry.
No, that's fine. Everybody else? So, based on this, we again have a number of areas that need attention. We have a class size policy, well, guidelines that then are adopted that we need to be aware of. We also have, we've had a, sometime, you know, a couple of years go by now where our staff has not seen the raises, cost of living raises, that, you know, I think all of us would like to see that some of that be reviewed and the professional development certainly needs to be revisited as well. So, I guess a lot of things to be thought about in, you know, anticipation of our next meeting. So, any other closing thoughts on 8F? Again, we'll have this on our next agenda as well as next executive session to discover, or to discuss the compensation component of this. Nothing else? All right. 8G, change in 2013-14 employee handbook, hourly event worker pay rate.
Okay. The policy committee, Mike and Scott, had developed basically a conversion from the event rate to an hourly event rate, which was kind of necessary part of the Affordable Healthcare Act in general, just to comply with, to make sure minimum wage was being paid and that kind of thing. And what Mike basically kind of, I think, developed the schedule and the policy committee reviewed it. And looking at comparables, what they kind of came up with was that most event workers would receive $10 an hour. The volleyball line judges, which is pretty much because of kind of normal standing, is $1,250 an hour. That's what districts are paying. And then the host would receive $12 an hour. So, currently, in our employee handbook, on page eight, at the bottom of page eight, it does have, event workers will be paid $8 per hour. And that's all it says. Then when you get to, there's two, three, and four, which provides a little bit of leeway as far as making some flexibility for some of those things. But when you look at 11B1, it just lists that. And so we're recommending that it be, the host receive $12 per hour, volleyball line judges $1,250 per hour, and then all other event workers receive $10 per hour. And we could do it as an appendix, but that's really the only thing, there's not a lot of wording on it that really summarizes where we are at with that. If we went to a lot of different rates for different things, you might want to look at doing that. But here, we probably could just incorporate it, instead of $8, just incorporate those three amounts into that, because either way, we're going to have to approve it each year if it changes.
Okay.
This is what was recommended through the policy and through Mr. Brown, if that's all right? Lot of work, appreciate it. I'll move to approve.
Second. Okay. Peter and Keith? Any questions on this? So this, realistically, it doesn't have anything to do with affordable healthcare. It's just realigning-
It does a little bit, because we are, we need to track for hours, because we have staff who are hourly employees, who are doing some of these events, working some of these events, and we need to track their hours for anything they're basically-
But the rate-
The rate, not necessarily, no.
Got it, okay.
Just that we had to convert it to an hourly.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we've got a motion by Peter, seconded by Keith, to approve people working events, $10 an hour, volleyball line judge, $1,250 an hour, and hosts, $12 an hour. All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. 8H, change authorization from Dr. Anderson, Deb Klein, for various functions at State Bank of Cross Plains. You should have that here. Jeff? Okay, any questions on this? Oh, you guys didn't get it? Oh, you got it.
Does Cross, does it need to be anything else besides Cross Plains?
Not currently, no. No.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. 8I, discussion on possible resolution for WASB.
WASB resolutions for the delegate assembly are due September 15. So really, we have one other meeting between then and that date, which would be the September, Tuesday, September 3, because our following meeting would be already the 16th. So by the 3rd, if we wanted to, if the board wanted to have a resolution that they wanted to move forward, it would have to be done at that meeting. So I just kind of wanted to, I felt the board should start that discussion if they were considering anything.
Okay. Yeah, Casey, is Mary, are you a delegate? You are, you are.
Mary Anderson was your delegate.
Mary was their regular and then the ultimate.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Are you asking for-
Well, if there's a feel from the board, if they want to even move forward with the resolution or consider a resolution to move on to the assembly.
Does anybody have any that they've been thinking about? Jeff? Okay, all right.
How political can we get?
I don't know the, a good answer to that. I mean, it's established for being able to take these resolutions for discussion and approval. Political, I don't know that it's intended to be political as much as, but what are you thinking?
Well, I was saying like parental choice schools and things like that, vouchers, some of the legislation that was passed a year ago, that's going to give tax credits to anyone who sends their children to private schools now. I mean, these are, these are things that I don't think they were even discussed at WASB before they went through the legislature, unless I just missed it. But I don't think there's a resolution either for or against either way on some of those things before it got passed and signed into law. But if I'm not mistaken, next year, and please correct me if I'm wrong, in, starting in calendar year 2014, tuition paid to private schools will result in a tax credit for the parents, regardless of your financial need. So, in other words, the state of Wisconsin is now subsidizing private schools.
Right. And I think that discussion has been at the state level. So I'm not sure what type of impact a resolution would have, other than it would make official-
I was just thinking that, and maybe I missed it. Maybe I just completely spaced that one out. But I'm suggesting that maybe WASB missed an opportunity to weigh in on it before it was, as a resolution. I mean, we have Mr. Ross Mueller, Dan Ross Mueller, who is the government affairs person. He'll go to public hearings and things like that. But I don't know that there was, at, any of the previous two or three delegate assemblies that that, the issue of tax breaks for parents who send the kids to private schools came up. That's, if you want to, I don't know how politically you want it to go, if that's too long a shot, I mean, that's-
I like the idea. I like what you're thinking. I just don't know that it's the proper stage. But at the same time, I don't know that there is a stage for that conversation. So, it may be, it's an interesting, it's an interesting thought. We've got one more meeting before we have to have our resolutions together?
Yes.
Well, it really doesn't, if we're opposed to it, it really doesn't help us to go to our representative, because she's already opposed to it. So, you know, it's like, we would be preaching to the choir if we went to our own representatives right now.
Well, and that's why I'm curious if it's the right stage. But again, it would put us on record of having a position and not a, you know, that we've got a very short runway on this. So, does anybody have any thoughts on this?
I'd say write up a resolution and bring it to the next meeting. And we can approve it.
Would you consider something like that?
I don't have a lot of experience doing that. I'm sure as well, give it a try.
Sue Bryce has a lot of experience with it. You might be able to give her a call and ask her.
Actually drafting one?
No, I don't think this board has ever drafted one.
Oh, we haven't.
Not to my, not to my recollection, if you've submitted one, but- There's a process on the board.
You could probably look on WASB's website if other districts, sometimes they will feed into that. And a lot of times, there'll be a theme and other districts will sign on to kind of a sample or base resolution that might be in that area.
I guess that their resources on WASB website would have some templates or, you know, sample resolutions that have been done.
Yep.
There is.
So would you two consider that?
A resolution?
For our next meeting? And if you get it done prior to our next meeting, which would be ideal, have Deb send it out?
Do you want to get it like 10 minutes before the meeting?
Preferably not, but is that all right?
Yeah, Leah and I can work on something without having a walking forum or anything like that.
Right. And that way, if you send it to Deb to be distributed, we avoid that conversation altogether. Any other questions on that? Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Leah. Great idea. 8J, discussion on joint meeting with village board?
Okay, they, as I mentioned in the updates, they really want like two dates, two other dates before they take it to their board, because they don't want to just kind of keep going back and forth with different dates and keep changing it. So they wanted two dates that would work for sure for our board. And then Dave will take that to the board, the village board. He just didn't want us to throw out all these different dates and then go back, keep going back and forth, so.
So I've got an idea on that, in that we keep the 30th. I know, Mary, you had asked that we change that. We've had this scheduled for months. And if you would be open to maybe having a conversation with me or with Deb to represent your thoughts for that meeting? It's just talking about, you know, the number of different calendars that we're trying to get aligned. And we, Deb and I had an opportunity to discuss this last week. It's just dealing with so many people, it's proving to be a challenge. And since right now, we've got everybody good for the 30th with the exception of you, that would be my ask, is that we keep the 30th and we just move forward. And then whatever issues you would like to discuss, either have those with me or with Deb and we can express those for you at the meeting.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Deb, would you, is that all right with everybody else?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And also, if you have any other items, I've been sending out kind of, we're still pretty much at that same original list, except we added additional crosswalking guards. But if you have any other items for, that you'd like discussed?
Do you have the current list right now?
Yeah, but it's not on me right now. But basically, it's using that land and also recreational opportunities, bullying, harassment, and how we can work more closely with the police department as far as communication and looking at some of those issues like bullying and then the crosswalk. So a lot of it's like recreational, how we can kind of work together for some of those. And that was one of Mary's, I think, like an indoor swimming pool. And using the vacant land that they might have an opportunity to get access to and how we can kind of use that together.
Okay.
And actually, the last policy I had asked, we're going to review the facilities use and then talk about whether that $5 is adequate or not, that we're charging per resident, no, not resident.
You brought that up at our last meeting?
At the last policy. So we're going to review the policy right before we move on to the joint meeting.
We should probably, as a board, though, discuss that.
Agreed.
Be bored of them.
The policy, the next policy meeting is September 3. And I think we were going to look at it at the next policy meeting?
Right.
Is that your discussion? And then there's a regular board meeting on the 3rd following that. And we don't meet with the village till the 30th.
Good.
So we have, oh, wow. I'm looking at the email originally sent by, I think, you or Dave. He wants to talk about school district land, indoor swimming pool, and football field land off Blue Mountain and a discussion of the bullying law in Manhattan. So, I think you mentioned all of those things.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. 98, we've got a second reading of the early graduation policy, 345.61. You've seen this once before. Does anyone have any questions on this? You've had a fair amount of time to review it at this point. Thank you, Peter. We've got Peter, seconded by Jeff. Any questions, comments on this one? Comments? None? All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Do we have any citizens' comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Well, you were talking about the-
Well, you were talking about the hourly rate for curriculars and sports and things. Does that hourly rate also apply to advisors for clubs and those things? Or is that still a salary, basic salary item?
Advisors are still under, it's kind of like coaches there, they'll set them up.
Other citizens' comments? Mr. Schruts?
I've got three.
Yes.
Under the communication discussion, there was a quest to have Superintendent Klein pull out the items that discuss emergency contacts. And I was unclear what she needs to do with those when she pulls them out. Is there, can somebody clarify that for me?
I can clarify it based upon what my understanding of the motion was, or Mary, if you want to clarify it based on your motion?
My recommendation was to pull those items out and have them discussed as part of the safety plan, the district's safety plan that Ms. Klein's been working on. Bullying policy is part of that, but also emergency procedures. And I believe that Teresa Dany's been working on it, as well as other administrators, but those are the two. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, that was what I was referring to.
Second, under 8F, the revenue priorities, you mentioned a need for a closed session on the salary discussion. What's a need for a closed session?
If we talk, if we discuss administrator contracts, that would be an executive session issue.
So, if there's no need to discuss the specific administrator, there's no need for a closed session? If it...
Unless, if we were to do blanket salary increases, that could certainly be an open conversation. But as we had heard tonight from a couple of different people, the conversation about having different compensation based upon longevity here, or based upon, you know, I, we, he didn't use the expression merit pay, but...
Pay for performance.
Performance. You know, that would be then a specific conversation based upon an individual.
Okay.
And so, for that reason, that's why I wanted it, is because we would be discussing, names are going to come up.
I just wanted to be sure that I understood, so thank you. And then, the third thing was there was a discussion about redistributing an updated class size list. I'm hoping I can get a copy of that list.
Deb, is that all right? Do you send that to...
Yeah, it's not, it's just like a summary of our enrollment right now.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Gary. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none. Future agenda items, we have, communication is going to be on our next one. We have the, the, what we had just talked about with Gary, the revenue priorities. Do we have any other ones?
The resolution.
Thank you, the resolution. Yeah, Peter?
If I may suggest, keep the next agenda a little bit sparse, because the appointment of that open seat will be on there.
Do we have an update on how many applications we've had for...
We have two right now.
Two, okay.
Also, we have to move the breakdown of cost per sport, per athlete, because we didn't have that. We had it done, but not available.
We should have the ad session on that.
Okay. Any others?
Can I make a recommendation that we consider not for September, but October? At one point, we had talked about looking at bus, kind of an itemization of how much it's costing us to operate our bus system. Every time I see it come on our finance, whether it's maintenance, or uniforms, or buses, or all of that information, if we could do like a cost benefit analysis of that, I know there's been one done, but it's been a while, right? Yeah, it's been quite a while.
Just prior to the bus garage being done?
So, I just think it would be probably timely for us to have that conversation again, as it's been eight years. But I want to make sure, that's a huge task, so I want to make sure that we're not talking about doing it September 3rd, but maybe October. Does that give ample time? It could be November.
Do we, do we track, and I apologize, I think I asked this last time you brought this up, do we have transportation under its own budget? We don't, do we?
Um, it's...
Fun number?
No, it's all part of, um, fun 10. Now, I'm losing my voice.
Okay. Because this is something that I've asked multiple times as well over the years. And I know that when the decision was made to do the bus garage, I've received plenty of assurances that it was much cheaper for us to have our own fleet. But it's been at least eight years now. So, I think it would be a great thing. October, there's a lot of numbers to put together.
So, maybe November. I don't care when.
Would you be okay if we did November? Because I'd rather have them take their time and have their numbers be accurate.
I don't care when it gets done. I just would like to have it be on the agenda at some point, because I would love to pay what I paid for gas eight years ago. So, I mean, that alone, just the cost of fuel and how that's impacted, let alone the issue of Affordable Care Act and the implications that that's now having for securing drivers, et cetera. So, I guess I just want to be mindful that we're looking at it, and we're not looking at it in, you know, it just keeps getting pushed off, and then it's 10 years or 12 years. So, I'm fine with November.
Okay. Great. Any other future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. We've got a list there of our next meetings. Are those, any of those changing?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you much.
Thanks, Keith.